Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, May 23rd. Again, this is a hybrid meeting, so members of the public are well- participated both in person and remotely. In person, we are at the Norton Media Center, 184 West Main Street. Also join on the video using the Zoom link posted on the meeting agenda, or through the Zoom app with meeting ID 6389291060. Meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. In keeping with the hybrid meeting for future sessions, if you have questions or comments for the board, please feel free to email them to Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, and they can be read into the record and forwarded to members as relevant if you aren't able to attend or just prefer to submit your comments in that manner. So, with that, I'll call the meeting to order here and dive a little bit into our general business in terms of planning board business and policies.
Do you want to save elections to the end as well?
That was what I was going to say. We can discuss elections potentially at the end, but since Eric is under the weather today, we can either move forward with it or hold off until our next meeting. And we can talk about that at the end. In terms of bills and warrants, we just have one bill which I can pass around, which is a $29.50 bill for Verizon. And I do not believe we have any minutes to address at this point. So, that takes care of the general business. We have two items under the Public Hearing section of our agenda this evening. The first one is continuation of SP 12737 for 280 South Washington Street. This applicant is seeking to withdraw their application without prejudice. And Brian is sharing an email from the engineering representative from that project. So, this is an application for an electronic highway billboard, and there's been some legal negotiations with the town. So, this is the procedure that the applicant would follow. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Motion to approve the withdrawal of SP 12737 without prejudice.
Do you have any further discussion on the motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions. Application is withdrawn without prejudice. After 11 continuations, I checked. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a continuation of SP 18584. This is 301 South Worcester Street. And I believe we have the applicant, Mr. Fasendola, here on the Zoom meeting. Thank you for joining us. As I recall from our last session, we wanted to make sure that you got what you needed through conservation in terms of crossing the wetland and everything else. Did you want to provide an update on that?
Sure, so for the record, Nick Fasendola, Level Design Group. And we did close out our public hearing with the Conservation Commission, and I believe an order of conditions was issued last evening. So, that is essentially wrapped up. We did work with Maria impressing some comments from the fire department. We responded to those comments via email, provided some additional information to the fire department on the load rating for the culvert that is going to be used to cross that internet stream, where they're replacing an existing 12-inch piped culvert. It's going to be a large precast box concrete culvert. Fire Department also had some questions about distance to the closest hydrant as these lots are located off the traveled way. So, I provided some additional information with regards to those items that were requested. And then they said that, you know, in the past, they looked at possibly having sprinklers installed at the single-family resident houses when the closest fire hydrant exceeded a certain distance. They didn't give an exact distance, but typically it's, you know, 500 to 600 feet, depending on how much hose they can carry. There was no comments on maneuverability within the common driveway and accessing the driveway. Mostly just what the, you know, one concern would be the lack of town water and sprinkler in the right-of-way serving those four lots that are going to be off the common driveway. So, I did provide a response. There's a few options that can be looked at. There is water at the corner of Dean and John Scott Boulevard. So, the developer would have a few options at possibly having a hydrant, you know, extending the water main down John Scott and installing the hydrant at the intersection of the common driveway and the right-of-way of John Scott Boulevard. And there's other options that they can be looked at, you know, dry sprinkler systems, wet sprinkler systems. These houses are going to be served by drinking water wells. So, sometimes a traditional sprinkler system for a residential house is difficult with that type of situation to provide the amount of pressure that's required for the fire system. So, you know, the board would be not opposed to a condition that says, you know, that item would be satisfied at the time of building permit as the fire department would be required to sign off on the proposed dwellings and building permit cards for each individual dwelling.
Okay. Brian, could you share that document again? I know you had it up there.
Which one? Order of conditions?
Their response to the fire department.
Sure.
Just so all the members can note the potential condition that you've suggested. Thank you. Just, I think, scroll down a little bit. Yeah, right there. Yeah. So, they'll accept a condition where developers should provide adequate fire protection for the houses serviced by the common driveway. And that could be a condition of the special permit. Okay.
Oh, and I forgot to mention it. A cistern located somewhere on more of the residential properties that we've provided easement is also another option which a developer may look into. These are all cost considerations. It all depends on how, you know, what they're looking to do with the houses. And, you know, if putting the sprinkler systems is costly, then like I said, they can do a cistern, which, you know, you guys have done at other subdivisions of other properties where there's not water service. So, there are options, so a condition would be acceptable to the applicant.
Okay. Anybody have any additional questions for Mr. Fasendola in this time? We didn't mention it, but thank you for providing the documentation regarding the, some of the conversations we had at our last sessions. I apologize a little bit for the rhetoric, but I'm glad we crossed the T and dotted the I there.
No, thank you very much, we appreciate that.
So, any additional questions regarding the application for the common driveway? Well, I'll give the members a chance to comment. Mr. Fasendola, just a note on that your project narrative, the initial heading actually says "South Washington," not "South Worcester."
Nope. Apologize about that.
That's "South Worcester," not "South Washington."
Since they are both streets in Norton, it's not an uncommon occurrence. Again, any additional questions at this time? Brian, I'm not sure if you want to share. I do have the site plan.
Verizon?
Yeah, just for the, to show the layout of the driveway. To make sure that if we have questions, that we ask them now.
I got one. Sure. The lot to the left.
This one?
I'm not sure, I don't have it on this side.
Okay, so it is off of the...
Off the common. The driveway gets skinny on that side. Is that going to be wide enough? It looks skinnier than the rest of the road. Is that going to be wide enough for, like, the fire trucks and stuff to get back to that, that house?
So, the far left foot's...
So, that's just the access to that specific house, and that's a 12-foot-wide driveway for that section. There were no comments from the fire department. The plans weren't provided to them with the dimensions of that driveway. They didn't have any concern. You know, they would just have to pull straight in, and they would back out and then essentially come around the bend, back all the way down, and then exit through the main, called the T, section of the common driveway. I mean, that section's only about, I'd say, less than 100 feet long until you get to the house. So, it's not a very long section, and it's going to be cleared and graded. So, it's essentially going to be wide open through that area with grass on either side. So, if they did have to, you know, drive onto the lawn, there's no steep drop-offs in that area that would, you know, prohibit a fire truck, you know, from having to, if they did have to go over the edge of the pavement, it could be done in that situation.
Their questions are much more focused on the sprinkler aspect.
Okay, yeah, that answered my driveway question. Okay. Only got one procedural question that just I thought of. Eric's not here, Steve wasn't on for the first meeting. So, that'll only leave five.
Which means everybody has to vote yes.
Correct. I just wanted to bring that up for the applicant, just so he knows. Then we only have five, five voting runners tonight.
Yes. If there are any specific conditions, questions, or comments that any members of the board have that they feel are critical or deal breakers, I would ask that we raise them now.
I got one, and it's not a deal breaker, but I kind of, I'm curious. In the subdivision rules pamphlet, it gives us the ability to ask for an open space lot? Is that true?
I would have to review that documentation. I'm not sure.
Okay. I'm not going to hold this one back on that, but it would be nice in the future to know whether or not we can have a park space added to subdivisions, if that's in our view to do that.
You mean, and this is separate from, like, a cluster, you mean?
Yes, it's in the subdivision packet that I got. Says we get to assign a open space lot that the town can buy out within three years, and the owner can't do anything with. And we have the ability to name roads. Those are like the two things that stand out.
Okay.
So, just curious about that.
But this isn't subdivision. Okay, it's an A and R.
So, this is just an A and R subdivision? You know, we're subdividing the lots. I think there's a little confusion with the language of it. It's not a definitive subdivision where those requirements could be in play with regards to providing open space and other types of considerations for development.
Thank you. I mean, is there something we can review in the board?
I mean, I would like...
I don't recall that section offhand, so...
Sure, for future things. I'm not going to hold this one up. I just, you know, would like to know. On this one, it stands out because there's a river running the whole way. So, I'd be curious if anybody would ever have access to that at any point. But these are all private lots, so that would forbid that.
Yes.
For the record, that section in the rear, it's not going to be cleared or further developed. There's a requirement part of the Conservation Commission permit. You're only allowed to disturb 10% of what they call the riverfront zone. So, that's from the edge of the river, 200 feet out. You're only allowed to disturb up to 10% of that area on the parcels. And that's essentially backed down maybe with, there might be 1,000 square feet on all five lots that's remaining. So, that area in the back, it can never be further developed or disturbed, given if somebody wanted to come in and apply for a pool or some other type of larger backyard. The Conservation Commission made it clear in their decision that that cannot happen as the 10% has already been used up. So, that, that whole corridor for wildlife purposes and maintaining that buffer along the river is going to be left intact.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? I'm seeing a lot of silence here, or hearing silence, I should say. And just to confirm, Mr. Fasendola, you have no issues with us closing the public hearing at this time?
I do not.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Alan and Laura. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions. Okay, public hearing is closed. And on the, any further discussion with the public hearing closed? Otherwise, we have action remaining on the special permit for a common driveway.
And motion to approve SP 18584 with our standard conditions, and also the condition that the developer will provide adequate fire protection for the residences served by the common driveway.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Alan and Wayne. Is any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll go to the vote. And I know this is going to require a roll because Steve is not eligible to vote. So, Jim, I will start with you.
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm staying. Oh, but this is...
Sorry. And I will vote yes. So, we voted to approve with conditions. And we'll work, Brian will be able to work on the decision, and we'll get that issued to you, Mr. Fasendola, as the process moves along through approvals in Town Hall and all that stuff.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Okay. So, going back to planning board business and policies, we have had an election, we have a new member. Eric is not here this evening. I did send him a message asking if he wanted us to hold off on proceeding with elections or not. I did not get a response. So, that would fall to us, whether we want to proceed this evening, whether we want to wait till the next meeting when everybody's here. I'll defer to the board, so...
If we don't have a massively full agenda, I think we can just wait. Let's see.
We don't have anything upcoming for June 6th meeting, which means that, well, unless we have an A and R law, that's all we can put on the agenda. So, if you want to have a meeting just for that, we can try to do that.
Otherwise, there would be potentially no meeting on the 6th.
Correct.
Can we do it virtual?
I believe we have the option to do an all-virtual meeting, yes.
That way, we can get it done without having to...
I've heard, I would have to go back and, because the legislature keeps renewing the hybrid and virtual meetings at like the $11, I would have to go back and look at what actually was included in the latest renewal. But I believe we do have the option to do straight hybrid meetings.
If that's the only thing we have on the agenda, I would say that would be appropriate.
Okay.
We'll put it off for the next one.
That is also a choice, yes.
If we're not meeting, there's really no need to organize, so...
Okay. So, it sounds like we're going to defer, and then we will decide how we want to proceed with our next meeting, maybe in a week or so.
Do we have meetings lined up, or do we have to set some?
We have up to the end of June, so...
So, we should probably schedule a couple more. Okay, so we have through June. When we have the, for June, we have the 6th, then do we have the 20th or the 27th?
We have the 6th, and we have the 20th.
Okay. I would potentially suggest July 11th and 25th. July 4th seems not like a good idea, so...
That's why you're the Jim.
Any objections to the 11th and the 25th?
I'm good.
Okay. And August, there are five Tuesdays. Let me just check something here.
It'll be away on the 8th.
You will be away on the 8th?
Correct.
Okay. So, if we go back, if we're on the 11th and the 25th, we could do the 15th and the 29th?
29th, that may have a conflict with football screen.
Okay.
It was the 1st, 15th, and 22nd.
Yes.
I have a conflict with the 15th.
The 1st and 22nd? Well, 1st might burn, then I don't know if I want to eat on the 1st. That's fine.
What if I bring ya a cake?
Sure. So, August 1st and 22nd, potentially? Okay. We can confirm all these with Eric at the next session. 1st and 22nd, and then September. Does anybody have any objections to the Tuesday after Labor Day?
I have no way.
Okay.
Sorry.
12th and the 26th of September? That's four months. Do we want to do one more, or just stop there? Let's keep going. And so, we're doing the 26th. Skip the 3rd, 10th and 24th of October.
I'm going on the 24th.
So, let's wait. Let's wait on October.
Do you want to have Halloween here?
No. So, since it would potentially be back-to-back weeks of the September-October crossover, we can just hold off for now. We've done enough of the scheduling for now. But yes. So... Okay. In terms of planning board business and policies, now, Brian, you had something that you wanted to bring up related to South Washington Street, correct?
Right, so I know we had discussed it last time with the appeal, but prior to the appeal, they wanted to give us another application for Plan B. And so, when that does happen, because Conservation doesn't like the Plan B, because we're going to have a building, and we thought that that might be different enough for it to be not seen as just a parking lot, which is what me and Maria had suggested.
So, we haven't seen this, this plan. We don't have it. But the crux of the discussion was that, their request to you, Brian, was that Conservation wanted to have a joint session with us to discuss it?
Right, that does happen. That way, it's not...
So, Conservation has seen it?
No, they've discussed it with the Conservation Commissioner, and they, and the Commissioner has conveyed this information to his board. And so, the board, rather than have us go back and forth with them on, you know, we like it this way, we like it that way, we're just joint meeting.
Is there a timeframe for an appeal?
A long, long time.
Is it a long time?
Yeah.
Two years usually?
More than a year, easily. Yeah, the, but the crux of that, of the, some of that is that the Conservation Commissioner would generally prefer the lowest impact use, and a parking lot where there is no structure would potentially be that. So, the board's priorities are a little bit at odds. So, I don't have an objection to it. It does kind of cut out a little bit of who we're waiting on, who waits for who, which board experts.
So, will it be a special permit application? Will it be a wholly plan, or we're just talking hypotheticals the whole time?
I think it would, we would need to, we would need to see a thing.
We would need to see a full project, not a hypothetical.
It would be a submittal, and we would have to determine whether or not it's different enough to have it in front of us, which is what me and Maria had suggested with the building.
So, the board will determine, is this sufficiently different from the prior submittal, which was rejected, A, and then discuss with Conservation?
Or is the building, do we know what the building that they're trying to put on is? Let's just...
We're not in the staging.
I have stated everything that I know.
If it wasn't their original intent, it's probably just a storage building or something.
Garage. Yeah.
At this point, we don't know what the building is.
Right.
Do we know what the intent is? Is it still to be an Amazon lot?
I have no idea. Could be Stewie's Doghouse. So, rather than dealing hypotheticals, I mean, I don't have any issues with a joint session with Conservation. In theory, arranging it might be interesting in terms of scheduling the meeting. They're usually on Mondays, right?
Mondays. So, we would potentially open up a meeting for a public meeting for a special permit and a conservation public hearing at the same time?
Yes.
That's different.
Yeah, this? Yeah. It's different, but, I mean, there are a whole bunch of projects where we get into the who should go ahead first, and we send the applicant back and forth between us. So, and this one, where our priorities may not necessarily line up in terms of what we're looking for in a project. It's not a bad idea. So, just a FYI. When we get that submittal, we'll address it and try and schedule it.
Yeah, so we'll have Tim meet with the Chair of the Conservation Commission to discuss whether or not we would host, or they would host, and how.
I didn't know that.
Well, that's what me and the Commissioner had suggested.
That's fine. We'll figure it out. Does anybody, other than Monday mornings, anybody not like Mondays as a general rule from a conflict perspective? Okay.
It would just be for that? It would be just for that application?
We'll figure out whether they join ours, we join theirs. You literally know as much as I know.
To open a public hearing, do they have to have an actual plan, or is this more of a fact-finding?
We have seen nothing, so we have nothing to react to whether it would be a public hearing or not.
So, conceivably just be a...
We've entertained applicants with a, how do you feel about this project before I submit it before? If they choose to go that route, then we could try to go that route.
We just get a reservoir, right?
Before they get through. A reservoir was a preliminary subdivision. The one by the wall, you mean? Yeah, that was a preliminary subdivision. Some applicants would say, I can either go in this direction or this direction. Before I go through all of the hydrograph calculations and all of this stuff, can you give me a general direction of which way you're leaning? A, B, or some C? can you give me a general direction of which way you're leaning, A, B, or some C option that we haven't talked about? So, whether it's a formal obligation or something like that, I don't know. So. I don't have anything else under general business. Brian, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Anything else anyone would like to discuss at this time in the open session?
The surplus stuff that I've been trying to attend, the virtual meetings, I evidently be in the presence, it just it falls on Wednesdays in a time slot that I'm not able to make. So if I was looking to
That is one of the elected positions to be one of the Be elected or appointed to the shooting, yes. So we have, in terms of the whole list, we have the Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, Serpent Representative, and Capital Improvements Committee?
Capital Improvements? No, that's till October.
Right, but that's And then we have payroll, payroll signer and alternative payroll signer. Serpent Representative is a specific appointment. If you we could take action on just that one, we don't need to address everything at once. If you don't feel that you'd like to continue as the Serpent Representative.
It's just I've made a handful of like meetings. It falls at different times, like tomorrow's at like, I think, five thirty, and I just, I can't make it, I have a baseball. So it makes it more difficult to attend. They're doing in-person now, correct? They, there's the option, like tomorrow I get the emails that you can, the last two have been, like, one was the dinner that was tomorrow it's in-person, but it's also has the virtual component to it, so there's a little of both. All of the meetings I've attended have been virtual. Yeah, we did virtual. Yeah.
So, does anybody, is there a member who would like to serve as the Serpent Representative for the Planning Board now? Or do people want to think about it and act on them with the other elections appointments?
I'm interested, but I don't know if it fits my timeframe, I have EDC meetings on Wednesdays.
Okay. That would be a potential conflict as, as Jim, you've said it's usually on Wednesdays?
It varies sometimes, but for the most part, it's been on Wednesdays.
Okay. So if we don't have anybody jumping at it right now, like, hold off right now, but understand that Jim, you don't think it's something you wanna take on in the next, for the next bit? Okay. Anything else anyone wants to discuss? Okay.
Motion, Chair?
Second. We have a motion and a second, is any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much, everybody, have a good evening.